I'm on.
He is.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Here.
Gurnat.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Pauls. Thompson is absent. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Amy Melton?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I just want to thank everybody who's down here today. I want to thank all the members of council. I know we still have one more week with Buster Brown, but as we kind of were just talking, we have one more meeting with Mr. Brown. We have eight meetings. I believe you're with Councilman Gurnat and Councilman Thompson, who's not with us today. And I just want to thank everybody in this room that who's really dedicated a lot of their life to serving the citizens of Omaha. I really appreciate it, and I think we're going to miss all of you. And we only have kind of a short time left, and I just was reminiscing. So for all of you out there who don't necessarily know what I'm talking about, Buster Brown will be leading us through 35 years of being our city clerk, and we are going to miss him in your life.
Thank you.
City Clerk, certified publication of daily records, efficient newspaper, on March 17th. Notes for retreat council and regular city council meeting in March 21st, 2017. Current copy of the open meetings act is posted on white binder on the East Wall legislative chamber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy for those in attendance, we would ask you to please turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final working plan board attachments, item five through eight are one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located southwest 176th and Emmett Streets from agricultural district to development reserve district. Six is to rezone to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is resolution at the platent titled Anderson Meadows Estates is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is resolution subdivision agreement with SNID 555 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers five through eight are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Brian Doyle, Fullon Camp Doyle in Jobin 11440 West Center Road, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second, to approve items five through eight. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through eight are passed, six to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to approve the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for West Village Point to allow for a monument sign on the southwest property line located at 17838 Burke Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Recommend.
Or denial, I'm sorry.
Public hearing on agenda number nine is today. Is proponents please?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf and with the applicant. I've got Ted Grace here of All Tech Builders, who is the owner of the building, and the applicant on the amendment to the mixed-use development agreement. This does come to you with a four-three vote from the planning board. Mr. Grace did represent himself at the planning board. I think there's some things that might have been said at the planning board hearing that might have changed the result, one of which was something that I will suggest here today. But I wanted to at least point out with, to all of you, what we're trying to seek a waiver of as far as the site regulator. And do have some photographs also that I actually took this morning. So this is the sign located right here. You'll notice that it does comply with a 12-foot setback on this particular street, which is Burke Street. And then on this particular street, there's only 7.6 feet of a setback, so it's a four-and-a-half foot deficit in the setback requirement of 12 feet. I'd point out to you that the sign could have been 12 feet tall. It's only nine feet tall. And what happened here was through really a miscommunication between the sign contractor and the sign company as far as who is responsible for obtaining a building permit. Mr. Grace is here. I think he acknowledged at the planning board meeting that he takes full responsibility for this slipping through the cracks and quite frankly feels bad about it. In the big scheme of things, it is a four-and-a-half foot waiver on one side. I do have some photographs here. This shows the sign. So here's the deficiency, the seven-and-a-half foot setback. And then, of course, on this side, it meets the full 12-foot setback. Here's another picture of the sign with the building. And as you can see, it's a nice masonry sign. And if, there's a bigger, kind of in scale with the building that it's the signage for. Again, it's an attractive sign. What I suggested to Mr. Grace after the planning board meeting, I said that maybe things would have been different had we suggested, or had you suggested, that if this sign would ever have to be replaced or substantially reconstructed, that you would meet the 12-foot setback requirement on both sides. Again, this was inadvertent. The only reason why we're before the planning board and the city councils, because this is a mixed-use area, so the zoning's by contract. If this was a base district zoning, we would be here, we would actually not be here, we would be at the zoning board of appeals seeking a waiver based upon a practical difficulty or hardship. And these types of matters unfortunately become, you know, before the zoning board of appeals, and they pass a lot of these as a matter of course. Of course, the planning department, their recommendation is denial just because it doesn't meet the site regulators, but that doesn't mean it's, you know, no way in hell kind of thing. But it's up to this council and this particular case to allow for this particular waiver, which in my view, in being out there today, it didn't appear to be too egregious to me. There was one question as to whether this area here is within the right-of-way. Mr. Grace does not think it is. If it is, for some reason, within the right-of-way, he's willing to relocate that. So it's outside of the right-of-way and/or obtain a lease with the city to occupy that right-of-way. So that's really all we have. It's an innocent mistake. It was not intentional, but the cost of tearing the sign down and rebuilding it is fairly significant for Mr. Grace, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 to do that. And it seems kind of needless for a four-and-a-half foot waiver, it seems to us. Mr. Grace is here to add anything that he'd like to add, and then we're here for questions.
Thank you. Another proponent who wishes to be heard?
Thanks for this opportunity to come here, and I just would like to.
Your name and address, please.
Name and address, please.
My office at 14921 Industrial Road. I have a, I'm president of a company. It's called All Tech Builders.
Name, please. Name.
Your name.
Ted Grace.
Okay. Thank you.
Wanted to point out, an Australian, please. Where do you get that on?
It's coming up.
The sign as it's located here, this power box that is adjacent to Burke Street, that power box is such where it requires the service of it with the aid of a hot stick. And that hot stick, if you, and I do not have that drawing here, but with that drawing, it shows the area of which that hot, the hot stick is needed to disconnect. So that created a limitation to the location of the sign. The, as Larry had mentioned, if, there you go. So that, I'm within about eight inches of that zone for the power company for that signage. So the other issue, I'm not, you know, I do a lot of home building and I do some commercial. And the contractor that I use to do the footings and the structure of this is a, does residential construction. And his, he nor myself was familiar with building commercial signs. And there was a misunderstanding between the time that I actually signed a permit that was submitted to the sign company, which would have been in early August. And what I understood was the permit was submitted for. And at that time, with the sign company or anyone didn't give me any indication of a problem with setbacks. And this is a mixed-use development. There's 12 and a half or 12 foot from each street. I understand some of the developments are on a secondary street. You can go half the setback, but in this case, it's 12, 12 foot and 12 foot. So anyway, a mistake was made on my part when it was set, and I, and anyway, I don't know if you have any questions.
Thank you. We'll go through the public hearing, and if we have any questions, we'll do it after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can stay close. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak with Dave.
Are you with me?
I am, yes. Dave Van Vaul, City Planner.
See, I think after I started taking a look at this, I understand the concept of an innocent mistake, and I'm going to make this public. So in the future, if anybody comes in front of us and says this is an innocent mistake, then we have to keep that in mind. It cannot be a one-shot deal. That's the one reason why I'm pursuing this. And as I started looking at the maps, we did see the hot sticks up here by the sign, the OPBD hot sticks. Does that mean you cannot go on that territory?
That is our understanding from OPBD, yes. You cannot encroach into that hot stick area.
Okay. And if you can recall visually, because it's sitting up there, but I just want to have access to it, the hot sticks, where it's located, you put the sign, you can't move that sign. Take a look at the sign is, and then take a look at the hot sticks, the box with the bars in it. So to me, logic would say, if I want to put a sign there, let's ask for forgiveness.
Are you asking me to comment?
Yes.
I would agree that the sign could not, in its present location, move any closer or within a couple inches, as Mr. Grace stated, to that hot stick area at that angle that the sign's been constructed. If it was constructed in a north-south orientation, then I guess I don't know what that setback would be, but maybe, you know, it could rotate from one point and be in more north-south orientation to stay on the hot stick, but again, we didn't get a chance to look at it when it came in.
Right, I understand. But as I take a look at that, if I were going to build that, maybe I don't want to get a permit. Because once I get a permit, I then, I find out for sure can't do that. I have a hard time, I understand you as a subcontractor, apparently does not do this particular type of work for a living. So the sign company, I am sure that they know what needs to be to occur. I mean, they just have to know if that's a, that's when we're dealing with professionals. If I were doing it, I could see where I could make a mistake. That's the issue that I have. But also, by reading a little bit further, and I think this is one of your statements, you added that the Village Point Plaza lacked, now here's the word lacked, extra right-of-way width to accommodate the decreased setbacks. So apparently, right now, this particular area does not, it lacks the extra right-of-way. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that was probably in reference to what we discussed at pre-council today. Back in October of 2016, there was a request for a major amendment for a sign that's located on the southwest corner of the site, and we were able to recommend in favor of that because of the extra right-of-way width there. But on this location, the right-of-way is not as wide as it is on the other corner of this development. So we were able to recommend in favor of the previous waiver because, again, like I said at pre-council, the sign is about, at that location is about 14 feet away from the sidewalk. Here, the right-of-way is not as wide, so it appears, and it is, a lot closer to the sidewalk than the other location.
Okay. I will stop here in just a second. I know there's support for this, I'm not going to argue. I just want to make this public. So when this comes again, because I think everyone needs to be treated with the same respect, whether you're a small person or a large person, and I don't think that always happens. So when the department is looking at plans, you can be a person with a large development or somebody in a very small development, you're treated equally. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking you to explain this, because I think you have the votes for this.
Rich, I don't know if you're addressing me, but I can assure you that we treat all applicants equally.
Yeah. I agree, because you're denying it. That's, you are, I'm just saying whether we do. Enough said, I have no more to say. I'm not asking for you to defend this, I'm just saying I think I made my peace, and I'm okay.
And I appreciate that. Maybe I can respond a little bit. Actually, you raised some interesting points, and that's what I was trying to explain earlier. The fact that you have these hot sticks and these areas that you can't encroach into, the fact that you have this right-of-way that's not as wide, granted, that doesn't change the fact that it was an innocent mistake, but those are the types of matters that we take before the zoning board of appeals that shows that there's a practical difficulty or hardship that would otherwise allow the waiver or the reduction in the setback. So this is actually, you raised some good points, I'm glad you did, because when you go to the zoning board of appeals, the planning department's recommendation is generally in denial because you're not in compliance with the code. This is just that set of facts. The only difference is, is that it's a mixed-use development, not a base district zoning, so we have to come to planning and council and not to zoning board of appeals, where otherwise this would really be one of those deals that they might find that there is that practical difficulty or practical hardship, I mean, or hardship with respect to this location, the sign. So I appreciate what you brought up, actually, because it's important, because not everyone can come here and show that necessarily, and I think maybe in this particular case, albeit it's an innocent mistake, but it maybe falls into that same category of a practical difficulty or hardship. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would believe that. I mean, I would, I see what you're saying, but when professionals do not get permits, that's the part that surprises me.
Yeah, and that was a mistake, there's no question about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I offer maybe a little bit of different perspective here because I spent, I think, seven years on the zoning board of appeals. And why this case is here is because in a commercial area that is part of a mixed-use development, this is the avenue of recourse to have a case like this heard, whereas the residential person in a house or a church or school, they routinely are heard by the zoning board of appeals. So it is somewhat of an anomaly that we're hearing this case, and it's only by virtue of the type of development it is. But I'd like to think that if we consider by analogy the standards that the zoning board of appeals considers, as Mr. Jobin suggested, is that is there a non-necessary hardship or a practical difficulty? And I think when you see this, the hot spots, sure, he could move the sign and have the sign only face a direction that no one could see, but it's at a place facing in an angle where you can then identify the business park so that people who are coming there are not rubbernecking and then getting into accidents, so they can plainly see where they need to find the site. Once you get past that, if you believe that there is such an unnecessary hardship or a practical difficulty, then you size up the applicant for their own credibility and how you think that they came across to you, and did you believe that this was in fact an innocent mistake? This person, I don't think, has ever been to this council before. I don't remember in my years on the zoning board that he was ever there. So to me, he has a high degree of believability, credibility, and it's one that, had we been at the zoning board, regardless of whether he was a resident, a church, a school, for this type of thing, I am confident there would have been a motion and a second there to grant this waiver with some conditions. And the condition would be that he pay the penalty that the building permit company, the contractor should have paid when they applied to do the project in the first place, so it's quadruple, I believe, for being late on that. And then if the sign degrades to the point where it's got to have substantial maintenance or reconstruction, that in fact, that they do use that opportunity to come into compliance in the future. So with that, I would make that motion, and I would say that regardless of whether you're just the average person, not a commercial developer or builder company, where you'd be at the zoning board, since you're here, we're kind of acting like the zoning board today. That would be my motion.
Now, second that, just for purposes of discussion. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Jerem. I see the logic behind your, the rationale you think that should be passed, and I know it's going to pass, that's not the issue. The issue is I want to make sure that the public understands when there are, I call crisis like this, that there are avenues, and we are one of those avenues. The only question I have is the innocence of not having permits, and then when you have a board goes four-three vote, that means there was some skepticism on this. And that's enough said, and thank you.
Well.
Mr. Jerem.
There's two lawyers on this council, and I think there's one reason why we have careers that we do, is that because people don't always avail themselves of the use of legal services when they should. And when I hear that Mr. Grace was at the planning board, serving essentially as his own lawyer, I would remind people of the saying often told to me, that is, he or she who has, him or herself, or a lawyer has a fool for a client. So you're more prone to run into situations where you say things and you have presentation not knowing what the law is, not understanding the practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. And I think if you are concerned about the slippery slope, that's something that an old colleague on the zoning board, Nate Dodge, used to say, is we call them like we sees them. And when they come in, you have to size them up, you have to listen to the facts of each case, and you can just make the best decision you can under the facts of those cases. And that's what I'd like to think that we're doing here today.
And Ms. Melton.
And I think this is where it's good to have members on our council that come from different backgrounds and have different experiences, because I didn't know necessarily what the zoning board of appeals necessarily routinely did, and I appreciated Councilman Jerem's experience on that board, because I do think everyone should be treated fairly. But I think when it comes to these things, we also need to take each individual case, look at the hardship, and make a determination whether this was an innocent mistake that's going to be extremely costly to fix. And then, they have a hardship where they can't necessarily move the sign over because of the OPBD, I think they were called hot spots, or.
Hot sticks.
Hot sticks, sorry, hot sticks. And so based upon the individual facts of this particular case, we need to base each of our decisions on those individual facts. And so that's why I would support Councilman Jerem's motion at this point in time to pay the quadruple fine for being late. And then, if and when that sign needs to be reconstructed, they're going to have to go through the process, not necessarily, not necessarily change it, but go through the process of getting the waiver through the proper channels when they go to fix it, if they still need that.
And I forgot to clarify, the motion did include that if he needs a right-of-way lease for that retaining wall, he should get it. That would be required. If not, you have to move the wall.
I would agree with that. And I actually had the benefit of being at the planning board meeting when this was argued, so I heard the argument then, and actually, I've still, I've been struggling with it ever since then. I wasn't sure how I was going to vote today, but I probably have had more time to think about it than most on the board. But I do think that Mr. Grace made an honest mistake, and I think that's what we need to look at. It wasn't, I'm just going to do this and ask for forgiveness later. I do think it was an honest mistake, and one that I think with this motion would be fair. So I do support that. I don't know if your motion was seconded, Mr. Jerem.
It was seconded.
Okay.
Seconded it.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
To add a little bit of levity to this, since we do have a couple attorneys on the council, I was watching this morning when they had a debate on the next person who's going to hopefully sit on Supreme Court, who I think is a great person. And one of the comments he made this morning, that he says, "Sometimes we have too many attorneys." That's exactly what he said. So sometime when you see it, he did, he made some comment, you know, "Sometimes we really don't need attorneys, but you've proven to me today that we, that you're okay."
You're okay.
That's a point of levity, but at least he did say that this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Mr. Gurnat.
Just so I understand, the motion is to deny? No. Okay. The motion is to.
Approve, subject to the applicant paying the.
Speak in the mic, we can't hear you.
The motion was to approve, subject to the applicant paying the penalty for not having the building permit, that upon the sign needing either substantial maintenance or replacement, that he come into compliance with the setback. And finally, should a, should the retaining wall be within the right-of-way, that he obtain a right-of-way lease, should it be intended to remain there?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No more lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve, subject to those conditions. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
No.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It is approved on a five to four to two vote. Liquor, item number 10, Virtuoso Pizzeria by David LaSole, 6056 Maple Street, Class C liquor license, application, oh, location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
David LaSole, Virtuoso Pizzeria, 6056 Maple Street.
Brent LaSole.
Thank you. And I assume you're here to answer any questions that we want to have.
Yeah, if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. LaSole, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Glad to have you here, and glad to have you and Benson here shortly.
Yes.
You have big shoes to fill here, of course, with the pizza shop. It's a very popular place for a long, long time, but we know you come from a great background too, and know what you're doing. So I wanted to give you just an opportunity to talk about what you're going to be doing there, so everybody can hear what the plan is.
We don't have a plan. No. I'm going to be offering at least four different styles of pizza. We intend to have a quick slice window at the sidewalk to capture that foot traffic, so we're going to create a different vibe. We're not really going to have so much as a bar to belly up to. It's going to be more like a New York-Chicago type pizzeria. You'll be able to get Stromboli, Chicago Italian Beef, house-made Italian sausage. It's really good food.
It's really good food.
And he's been humble, and he said that he doesn't have a plan, because I've seen the plan, and it's pretty thick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a plan.
They tell me knows what they're doing. And it's a good central high school family, too, so I can vouch for that.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you say hi to them for me, and I'll motion to approve.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, I have a question. Your food going to be as good as your mom's?
Yeah, I work there now, doing the food there, so it should be the same across the board.
Thank you. Now, why would you put here one of those?
My mom would argue that it's-
It's been moved and seconded to approve, item 10, no further lights, roll call.
Actually, item 11 goes with that, I forgot to add that. It's catering for the same applicant, same location.
Okay.
So we'll take both of them together.
Items 10 and 11, it's been moved and seconded, I'm assuming, for both 10 and 11. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
10 and 11 are adopted, six to zero.
Thank you, and have a great day.
Item number 12, Spice Boys, 12317 West Maple Road, Class C liquor license, nullification, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 12, is today, proponents please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Kieper, 12317 West Maple Road, doing business as Dolce.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, item 12, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
12 is adopted.
Thank you.
Six to zero. Item number 13 is Skybox Grill and Bar, 6720 South 168th Street, Suite 5, Class I liquor license, nullification, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 13, is today, proponents please.
My name is Jordan Holst, I am the attorney for the applicant, HJP LLC, doing business as the Skybox Grill and Bar. These are my clients, Josh Purcell and Holly Goodman, and their address is the same as the business, which again, is 6720 South 168th Street, Suite 5, and we are applying for a Class I liquor license. We're here to answer any questions you may have today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moved and seconded to approve, item 13, no lights, roll call. Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
13 is adopted, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14, Hy-Vee Restaurant, number 8747 North 132nd Street, Class I liquor license, nullification, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 14, is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. James Lehman, address is 747 North 132nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Miss Melton?
I wanted to thank Hy-Vee, I know that they've done a lot of work in trying to rectify the noise issue, although we're still working on it. But the neighbors, I think, have been very appreciative, and I just wanted to say thank you to Hy-Vee for reaching out. I know that there still is some noise issue, but we're working with the manager and trying to figure that out. But when do you think this restaurant will be completed?
Construction is going to, is due to start sometime this year.
Okay, because I know it hasn't been constructed yet, but-
Correct.
I buy a lot of my dinners right there, so, anyway, I'll move to approve it.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve, item 14?
14.
No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
14 is adopted, six to zero. Item number 15, Pitch Coal Fire Pizzeria, 5021 Underwood Avenue, request permission for addition of an outdoor area to the north of their present license. We have communications saying that they need a proper fencing.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda, item number 15, is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. Marcus Hebert, 818 South 93rd Street, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Dean Leesman.
Thank you. Same address?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Miss Melton?
I wanted to thank Hy-Vee, I know that they've done a lot of work in trying to rectify the noise issue, although we're still working on it. But the neighbors, I think, have been very appreciative, and I just wanted to say thank you to Hy-Vee for reaching out. I know that there still is some noise issue, but we're working with the manager and trying to figure that out. But when do you think this restaurant will be completed?
Construction is going to, is due to start sometime this year.
Okay, because I know it hasn't been instructed yet, but-
Correct.
I buy a lot of my dinners right there, so, anyway, I'll move to approve it.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve, item 14? 14? No further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
14 is adopted, six to zero. Item number 15, Pitch Coal Fire Pizzeria, 5021 Underwood Avenue, request permission for addition of an outdoor area to the north of their present license. We have communications saying that they need a proper fencing.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda, item number 15, is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. Marcus Hebert, 818 South 93rd Street, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Dean Leesman.
Thank you. Same address?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, guys, how you doing?
Nice to see you.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming, we appreciate it, and I appreciate that application here, too, I think with the improvements to the streetscape there in Dundee, we'd always hoped that this would start to happen, some movement outdoors onto the sidewalk, and some already have, but I'm glad to see Pitch now doing it as well. I think this would be a great addition to your outdoors. When do you figure this would be established and up and running?
As soon as we get done here.
Great. Well, it's pretty nice outside, so I'll go ahead and move approval.
It's absolutely beautiful.
Fifty's this weekend, but after that.
If anybody hasn't seen it yet, it's so cool.
Motion is to approve with permits for fencing.
And it's been seconded? Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve, item 15, and no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
15 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 16 through 24 were held on March 14, 2017. Mr. Jarum?
No, I'm on that, I'm on that resolution.
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve, items 16 through 24, no further lights, roll call. Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
16 through 24 passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 25 through 34 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarum?
Yes, I have a comment on number 30, which is a tennis court resurfacing contract for the Prairie Lane Courts. And I'd just like to know from Omaha Parks and Recreation, generally, what the plan is for addressing other parks that have courts in them and their resurfacing needs, in particular, Dewey Park in Midtown.
Tracy Strattman, Omaha Parks Department, and in particular, Dewey Park is on the list of having some capital improvements done. Currently, right now, we are looking at the facility and not the courts, so that's first in our queue, if you will, and then beyond that, of course, we review master plans on an annual basis of what comes next in all the parks.
So as I understand, the pavilion, which by the way, due to the cooperation of the Parks Department, actually serves as the home base for the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association and their meetings, and they've done some improvements inside, but I think what you're talking about would be some new restrooms?
That is correct, and we're actually working with the Clay Court Tennis Association in cooperation with the Neighborhood Association to do that, for a multi-use facility, but primarily, the demand is for restrooms, yes.
So that's the priority, then, for the immediate future, but more longer term, you'll be getting to the resurfacing?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I also have a question for Ms. Strattman in Parks on item number 33. So this is a, we discussed this this morning a little bit, this is a Keystone Trail stabilization project, there's a retaining wall underneath the bridge at about 78th and Cass there, that has become a problem with erosion, similar to other locations on our trail system, that needs to be replaced, because right now, it's old railroad ties that have been there for about 20 years, and this would make that more of a terrorist situation with pre-cast concrete for the long term, and I think be a nice benefit to our trail and for all those that use it. But my question for Ms. Strattman is, when this is approved today, we anticipate construction starting in late April, is that correct?
Tracy Strattman, Parks Department, that is correct. Late spring, early summer is the designated timeframe for that to start.
In a duration of about two months, we think?
That is correct. We do believe that it will be done in two months.
So it's a significant timeframe, and especially right when the trail is probably seen its heaviest use, as people start to come outdoors, as we saw this weekend. So I just want to repeat our conversation this morning a little bit about the concern of a reroute, or some safe method of redirecting folks during that timeframe, who, and everybody will be looking to go around that area, and maybe over the street there, which is very busy. We agreed this morning we would get together on that before construction starts, right?
That is correct, and, you know, we'll try and direct traffic at the earliest point of safe, of a safe turnaround, and not right there at that busiest junction.
Okay. Yeah, we want to make sure people still have the opportunity to make it through there when they're exercising, but also in a safe manner, and probably engage the Neighborhood Association on that, too. So I look forward to doing that with you in coming weeks, and we'll motion to approve this item, as well as the rest that are on there.
That's the entire-
Yeah, all of the consent agenda.
Twenty-five through thirty-four.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda resolutions, there are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jarum?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
25 through 34 adopted, six to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item 35, special ordinance, delivering a special text in assessment of lots and pieces of real estate within roadway maintenance District 7, 4, 5, Day 24, to cover the cost of construction and improving streets on South 95th Circle from West Center Road North to the end of the cul-de-sac by asphalt overlay, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 35, is today, proponents please.
It was held.
Oh, it was held, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was held, can be passed today. Public hearing was held on 3/14/17.
Move the amendment. Second.